Nice, welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Let's call the meeting to order and begin with the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and made visible, legal, liberty, and justice for all. Alright, I would like to move to accept tonight's agenda for August 10th, 2020. If I may have a second. On favor?
Yes.
Yes? Any votes?
Yeah.
So acceptable. Right, we're gonna begin tonight's work session. Richell's your review. Janor? Januyn?
Yes, we just had our first policy review of this term. And there are two revisions. One is the leaves of absence for staff voting for being able to vote in the election. And the changes are that they will be excused for up to two hours if they do not have sufficient time to vote. It used to be four hours. And so basically, I think we're pretty well covered for all the staff here for November election this time around. And there's also an update from both seasons about the, under the area of patriotism, citizenship, and human rights education, which is adding in some language around that we will instruct, have courses in civics and patriotism and citizenship. And we're adding in civic education value, our shared history of diversity, and the role of religious tolerance in this country, along with old language, which included human rights issues, et cetera. So those are the only final items. There is getting into the regular review of policy. There's a long section in 7000, which is about attendance. And things are a little up in the air around how we'll be tallying attendance and the 180 days. And so we're doing more research before we get into even a first read.
We reached out to the Prossians Policy Service and they anticipate some updates and changes.
And the rest of the sections under attendance, we did a first read through. And we're all be adopting our policies from previous years without changes, except for reading through one of them. Very sad.
Good job, man. It's hard. Prepare, nerd.
Laying it, I miss you. Taking a glance, everybody look hard. I'm seeing what's on Thursday and I was going to throw it all in the long. So everyone's doing what's in the classroom. Alright, moving on. Claims on every who made, cheating, and supplies after drug trial.
There's nothing. There was literally nothing.
Literally nothing. There was literally nothing.
Does anyone have any questions? Alright, I think that we can feel very comfortable. How about the CARES Act?
So I did want to talk briefly about the CARES Act. So as you know, we got both a deduction for our pandemic adjustment and then we received the CARES Act money. Both were the same amount, so roughly $234,000. When we received the adjustment back, so we were, we were told that it needs to be shared with our non-public clients. So, you know, right, there's other our students, so they got a small portion of that. We use the Title I grant formulation. And as part of that, anything that you're covering under ESSA, you need to have some collaboration with the community. So I did meet with all of our non-publics in the district. I feel like through the process, through the survey process, we've reached out to the community. At the end of the day, all of that money is going to be spent on childcare, distance learning. All, most of it already been spent, quite frankly, PVE. But I just wanted, wanted the board to know that the application is in. And I think, you know, it's money that we need to just spend on, on paid due.
You mentioned that the money was withheld from us. Which also, the kind of return to us, running in.
No, they don't get any.
So the kind of difference. How much money is?
The non-publics got about a total of 3,000. It really wasn't, it really had nothing to speak of. You know, at, at the end of the day, we will also help support them in some of our efforts. We provided everyone lunch during the, the last shutdown in summer, no matter whose children or what school they went to. We have, you know, we have a nurse, a parrot time nurse that we find in the health and clubs. We'll be providing her with PVE as well. So.
Okay, silly subject.
Look at me with all these things. So, so in the middle of our, everything else and our return plan, we had a little incident at the middle school where we had an electrical short. Normally, when you have an electrical short, you can fix it quite easily. This time the short is underground in the crawl space. So if you can, you know, if you can imagine the work that's gonna have to happen down there. Our policy from the middle school basement is not a particularly pleasant place to be, to begin with.
This is in 600.
So I, I called our new rep at FBD. We have a new people that we wanted, Mr. Staples. And he was very gracious in his conversation with us. He's going to allow us to start remediation immediately. And then we'll put this as an emergency project. Mr. Peters did reach out to three different electrical contractors. Only one of them responded, and that was Ferguson. We've worked with Ferguson before, they've done a really nice job for us. So we're gonna, you're gonna see a resolution to move forward to get the work done. It's a minimum of a two-week job. It is gonna be aidable because we're gonna do it as an emergency project. But it's got, it's gotta be done. We can't, we can't do that. I mean, we could, we could feasibly, if we had to start here with a generator, we could. But that is not a long-term solution. No power from middle school, just the generator.
The generators.
There's a small generator. So will the new one go in that house?
Well, it has to.
It's gonna be hung from the ceiling instead of being underground.
And that crawl space was supposed to be a rated.
Yeah. We'll, we'll have to be really careful about where they're working. But we're, you know, this also gives us an opportunity. We're moving forward to get the other electric, get a, a big enough line to carry to yourself. We're gonna pick up that.
So this has to happen.
Better now than when.
Yeah, I mean, it's never a good time to lose your electricity, right? But summer, no PVE school. I mean, it's better than, better than if you had to shut down in the middle of everything.
What's going on up front? Is that a town job?
That is a town job for replacing the sewer line. It should be done shortly. So we're moving pretty quickly, actually.
Yeah.
And maybe allow them to sort their, maybe get our, sort them out of what it looked like now, but they didn't have a better place.
Sarah?
Well, obviously, this week we began our parent forums. As you know, the governor basically opened up schools depending on where the district was at. And as you can see, we made a precedent. I didn't create a plan to be submitted. I apologize. But we seem to have rectified that situation. So despite the fact that every news agent sees this side, this is a huge, huge story. I haven't just called the best. So, you know, the governor has said schools will be open, but has created a number of different new criteria for that, which includes these parent forums, which we have scheduled. And we have a teacher forum that's ten of us scheduled next Monday. We need thirty to ten to allow the, not just the teachers, the staff, to tune in. Governor made it quite clear that we have to be very open to, like, those suggestions, which we have, we never have, we're pretty, made a number of adjustments based on some of the feedback that we receive already. We're very willing to do that, but we also cannot alter the plan such that we are not in the center of the guidelines and guidance that is established. For instance, you know, I know, I know there are many, many families out there that are upset about the issue of the hybrid model. What, I move my children Mondays or Thursdays and Fridays, Wednesdays and Fridays. Child's fever, I, I understand that. But, but because the governor has opened schools doesn't mean that we cannot just overlook the banding of social distancing that must take precedence over everything else that we're doing. It says it right in the guidance stuff. It's the whole reason why we get moved quickly away from in-person, more full in-person with a mask to the hybrid model, which allows us to divide us from the hybrid, which we have, obviously operating. So I, I know that, I, I recognize that this is a burden. And I wish I had a better answer. I, I don't. I can tell you that, you know, Dr. Rupka and I are reaching out to the YMCA to see if there's anything they can offer to us in terms of whether that's childcare or our families, families. But they have limited, you know, there would be limited opportunities. And we have limited space. So just because we can, the whole point of having less, you know, to break the case is because we couldn't do social distancing. I can't run a 200 kid daycare even, you know? So we'll see. We'll see how it all plays out. I, I don't, you know, I know, I know, for instance, there was a dad today that was really, really upset. Feel for him. I wish I had a better response to him. I do apologize to him for not having a better response. I know how angry he was compared to wanting to bring my kids. You know, I, I don't have an answer. Except that you're willing to rely on the family. So that dialogue will continue, but, you know, obviously, we're all making sacrifices in this pandemic. If there's any ideas or thoughts about that, I'm very willing to hear what that is. I know that that is an issue for. We'll continue to make that part of our dialogue. I can't say that we're here. But it's something that we changed, that we believe in that, to a greater lesser extent. But that's the, it will be a big ball max to this issue. Dr. Lyon has created, has taken really everything from our plan very much expounded by the work that's taking place from the teaching and learning standpoint. So this, this eight-page document here really summarizes and encompasses everything that we're doing in the teaching and learning standpoint. And hopefully, once we, we have these available for families of the US, the college, the investment. You know, that this will give parents a good user guide for our, our learning plan so that they can make choice to decide if they want to be part of the hybrid or to move to the 100% model. In every instance, you know, we will have certified teachers, certified special education teachers, and teacher aides in the instance where students need that sort of support in the IEP. Spent a lot of discussion with our special education families, which we guarantee will, my challenge in IEP that says they get a one-to-one aide every day, will that aide come to my house? We'll have that aide remote, and that aide will be working with the student remotely, which is we did, but I can't send a teacher aides to people's homes. That, that, that would not be right for that aide. It just would not be the right approach to handle. So, you know, I know that that's gonna be problematic for some families. But, you know, we're hopeful, given the work that's going on right now, teacher planning, allowing both of these opportunities, and the experience that we had in spring, that will be stronger with our game in terms of our responsiveness, in the standard. And we continue to, to work at that, develop that to, to September 8th. But, you know, again, starting the school year off in a hybrid model with some students 100% remote, other students here on campus in a very limited fashion. None of us have ever done this before as administrators or teaching. So there's going to be a learning curve from September 8th moving forward. This is not going to be seamless. There are going to be gaps. We are going to do our very best to alleviate those gaps between now and September 8th. Again, I commend Dr. Ryan again for the staff development plan that you guys put together to bring teachers up. But on the 100% remote side, we're still having a conversation tomorrow about who is going to be working there. We still have not turned from a teaching staff who's gonna be with us and who's not gonna be with us. We need to look at the population of kids that select the 100% remote. Is, is half the population? Do they have an IEP? Do 10 other kids have an IEP? It really will depend on the numbers of kids that select the 100% remote in terms of the staff that needs to be dedicated to it. And we won't know that until families make those decisions as to what they want to do. So, you know, there, there's a lot of moving parts to try to build this in. Red Bell, September 8th. And even after it's moving, it will be growing as we develop it, pushing through into the first 10 weeks. I did have a family today say, well, you know, what will happen? You know, we could be choosing the first 10 weeks, but we wanna go that way. I said, well, you will be placed in the classroom, be the classroom teacher, and you'll enjoy that class. Will the kids be behind or? I, I can't say what would be that.
They'd be very well be ahead of it.
Correct. It could be very well ahead. It could work really well for them. But no, I, you will have to diagnose those students and see where they're at on a baseball basis. I, I couldn't, I can't say for sure what it would be that. You know, these are all unknowns. We do have, you know, we do significant benchmarking and diagnostic testing early on in the school year. That's all going to continue to take place, whether it's in person or remote. So, you know, we're, when, we will know where students are at. We know that they will rest as a result of what happened in March. Well, we can't say that for sure. Many students did quite well in the, in the remote model in the spring. Some, some others didn't do as well. We'll see, through the diagnostic testing and benchmark testing that we're doing in the early part of the school year, which we do every school year. The teachers will have a better handle on where the students are at. You know, I, I've impressed on it quite a bit, when we know that they will rest. We don't know where they're at. We need to take the time that we always take at the beginning of the school year, find out where they're at. So, um, we will have a prepared meetings, we'll move those forward. As I stated to Dr. Rupka and Dr. Lyon, you know, I will, I will stay there until every question is answered and every parent gets heard, both in person and remote. I know for instance, today, the first secondary session is completely full in person. So if you want to come to go to that one, you don't have to go to, you go remotely or you don't have to sign up for it on the following weekend. We got two each week, the next few weeks. So that will cover us. We will get forwarded for governors that on 2020. We only have three, so, you know. We're doing a good diligence to try to get that.
We have this.
Yes, we, yes. We thought about it. You know, it's a pretty good.
Are you gonna want, are you gonna want a board?
I would, very much. I, I would feel very comfortable, and I've asked you to reach out to you. And not necessarily that you have to say anything.
No.
But the mere fact that you're there with us as leaders of the community would be important. So yes, if you are available on any of those nights, we would ask that you would come down to the primary auditorium with the central office administrative team, the building administrators, so that we can show, you know, this is unified front with regard to the opening of school.
Maybe we could find on the chat.
Yeah, that'd be great. So you can work on that. We do, obviously, we've got Wednesday and Thursday this week, so. Thursday. Thursday. And then any, any other board members. You don't have to sign up. So we're having done. That's alright. We can be over the number with the administrators.
Oh wait.
Yeah. So I'll open it up to questions from the Board of Education. I want you to get a chance to digest this, this feedback, both formally and informally. Lives outside of these groups, to your table.
Do you have any to please us on?
I, I don't. We, we received very limited understanding of our role in this testing and contact tracing. Basically, we were told today that they, the Department of Health handles testing and contact tracing. Schools don't. And if we need you based on a case, we will contact you to help us with contact tracing. But schools would have no role in testing whatsoever. Schools are not, will not, according to the Department of Health, you know, no nurse is going to call Department of Health, Nider County Department of Health, if, you know, Johnny Smith has cough and sniffles. Even those, those may be symptoms. We're gonna follow the protocol and the flow chart. Largely, that, as I've mentioned to you, the fourth column, which talks about staff or students visiting, it's one or more symptoms, but it's not suspected of having COVID. So there's a lot, and the Nider County Health Department talked about, you know, the nurse needs to talk with the family, make sure that you prefer them, make sure, get them, tell them to see a, a primary care person or emergency care person. And have a note to return so that someone has seen that child. And that individual may, may protest that medical. So I know that there was a, there's a, there's a working group. Greg Rattia, who's from North Town, Orlando Superintendent, Michelle Bradley, Blackboard, is going to meet with the head of the nursing cohort in the Nider County Health Department. Again, if you looked in at the Department of Health guidance that came out that I forwarded to you, did you see that? I forwarded that to the board. What? They're gonna work on how those, particularly under contact tracing, those questions. Yeah, that supplemental guidance that came out, and I sent to everybody. You'll notice under contact tracing.
Provide details throughout each school with support supplement. Count all placement efforts that we will have to guard. Intensively, the protocols for sentimental individuals, positive cases of schools. Maximize, maximize contact. And determination of how students and our staff need to be tested to incorporate the issue.
So the Department of Health is gonna work with those two superintendents. They're gonna draft kind of a, I guess, an FAQ to those, to, three, two specific areas, testing and contact tracing. And so that we can then review it, and that will be placed on our website. It's our, because we have to make sure that we have on our website specifically about stakeholder communication, outreach, the remote learning, with testing, contact tracing, when we get this, according to this guidance. So, but what I learned today was that the Nider County Health, Department of Health, really helped that schools are not in any way, shape, or form involved with testing on the campus by any of our personnel. Now, that runs counter to, the governor's at the, you know, Department of Public, gonna have to work that out with the Department of Health agents, because I believe that was the same message through the group health as well. Nider County had 13 test sites, and now have seven. Nider County had access to a significant number of tests. That has been reduced by half, but. So there's less places to get tested. There are less, less tests. And the turnaround time for the test is up to five days. So why a political official would make a kid like that? But those, in, in the context of those parameters, I don't understand. The governor has done an outstanding job. There's no question in terms of getting to where we're at. But some of the most recent, you know, edicts, for him to say, for instance, today, 107 districts have been, you know, they better get their plans in. I, I can't imagine why any district wouldn't have a plan. Why would you say such a thing? It's irresponsible. But I had, I had a parent email me, told me that I shouldn't get political. Because apparently I get political. I won't get political. Because I, I do like the job that the government has done to get your stakeholders where it is right now. I do believe that he cares what happens to New Yorkers very much. So, you know, I don't want to. We'll just figure this out. We'll just figure it, we'll figure all this out. You know, I just keep saying, we gotta keep moving forward. I can't get mired in what happened three hours ago, because what's gonna happen in three hours should be. should soon change. Just gotta keep looking forward and pushing forward. You know? It's not gonna be easy. It's just, it's not, it's definitely not gonna be easy.
The one question that keeps popping up in it isn't well dressed in our plan, because our plan says that we're helping all the reputations, is what exactly is, everybody really wants to know, what's gonna happen? So when there's a case in the classroom, does that classroom get shut down? Does the whole school just shut down? Like, what, what is the intruder shutting down? And, and, or to people there? People are very interested in this, so they stop asking.
It was quite clear from DS Stapleton, that if a case develops and that, that student had had contact in school, that would not in any way force the school to shut down. They would have to conduct their contact tracing, and those individuals that were identified through the contact tracing would have to point. But it would not shut the school.
Shut the school, what if the test? It's what they wanna know. They wanna know. I'm kidding.
No.
You know?
And we might not even know. But we're not going to be told. We haven't, the only way we'll come to know is if there's contact tracing that's done.
But when, but when somebody's interviewing for contact tracing, you say, where have you been in the last fourteen days? And they say, I've been sitting in Mrs. Smith's class in school.
Right. And then they would do the contact tracing, and they would turn, well, six feet apart, did you have? So only if you're.
So that's what people wanna know.
Yeah. So only if you're in close contact, and I think it needs to be less than ten, ten minutes, I think, is the, is the time. So for instance, if you're passing someone in the hallway. I think there's a tendency to, well, I know, but you said, DS Stapleton said, hey, you would have to be in that person's presence consistently for ten minutes.
Unmasked in that.
Correct. Correct. So in those instances, if let's say that the majority, the teacher and the majority of the kids in that class, then we may have to shut that class down. For those kids that are not being asked to order to. We may have to move those kids to another class. But I don't envision us shutting the school down completely. It was larger spread than that, than it's said, that we should shut down for twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours. But the, the closing, the closing of school or the closing of the classroom would have to be done on a case by case basis. There can't be, there's no set policy in terms of student A tested positive for COVID. The whole school has to shut down. Class has to shut down.
Well, my other thing, when you were talking about the daycare, the public, perhaps, maybe with the consultation with our lawyers, maybe could come up with a best for parents that would give us more information about the need that they're entitled to? And the fact that unemployment might be available to them?
I, I, I don't know what the employers provide for this.
But there's some things that are just in law, that they should, maybe we could at least put up something that says, you know, these might be available to students. A lot of people might not know. Like, for instance, if your school is closed, and so if your school's closed for three days to you, I mean, it's awful. But as opposed to you, you could still qualify for unemployment. It's only using to a lot of unfinders. Your primary care to the child who's school's. So if they're closed for three days, it might only. So. I see what you, I, I see what you're saying, that you don't wanna.
I don't wanna entirely advise people to what they're right here. I don't get far on point. I have a lot of information to add. If different people have different count on finders, have different.
No.
Number of work hours. It's much, it's struggle, and sometimes it's a matter of you know, looking to the neighbors and being part of community, and it's not gonna be. It's just not, not gonna be people, and I, I would say it's not, it's probably what's happening. Thank you for a little idea.
What other questions might be important on this agenda to get to? I mean, it's kind of.
People just have their choice.
Other? Yes, another.
It's like five hundred and seventy. Hold on one second, I'll give you the best information. My next question, and we'll come back.
Okay. Well, the follow-up to that is what percent of those people, children were lost. Yep. And then the other question I have to spread it to, I guess. Maybe I misunderstood last time. In here, it says the APAC learning program does provide advanced placement courses.
Does, yeah.
So the kids who will be in AP classes.
They can, yeah, we just learn that.
That's okay. So that's.
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that was the answer question to.
Yes.
I have a member, it's ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. We have six hundred and four people responding so far. And those are families, remember? So it's not students.
Multiple.
Multiple, that's right. And of those six hundred and four families who have responded, at this moment, eighty-six point eight or five hundred and twenty-four of those families are going to come to campus. Which means thirteen point two or four. Or eighty families are to be gone. And those eighty families, of course, represent more than one child.
Do we have an idea of how many families?
I don't know.
I don't know that either. I, I wanna say it's in the sixteen hundred range. Yes. And there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of families like that.
There's a scenario that it's so much.
There is that scenario, yes. That is, right. But you figure that would, that would require twelve kids per classroom.
Yeah.
Right, right. It's a lot of kids, it's a lot of kids.
I will also tell you that eleven families have indicated that there is a medical exemption. So that's, that's important information as well. And we are, you know, working now to look at how many students are going to lay for grade level. To see if it's more significant or not. I don't have that information.
The transportation survey of that.
That's the same one.
That's the same thing.
Did you wanna take it?
I did.
No, I did it. I just made a way.
Well, that's, I, I'm hopeful that, you know, the majority of people, you know, most people will respond pretty quickly to that, so.
I think we need to spend another, the might.
We have a fair, we have more than a fair amount of families, personally, that are going to be driving. And as a result, I'll be meeting with the police this week to talk about the, the first two weeks of traffic. Because if you get too carried out there, you easily fell.
And we can't handle light, right?
Oh. The, the process to get away. We could, we could have. The process to get away from the nearest state department of transportation.
Maybe you still there.
Yeah, I know, that's what I know, and I don't know. I mean, it, it, it was bad before.
It was extensive, extensive. I remember when I was at Sweet Home, they got a light. They got a light. And it was, took them ten years to get there. I have missed my cycle.
I remember that one. To me, they may not want this. Because especially with that driveway to the high school. It's too close to the corner, and it's already right there. And I think it did actually, it took human to do it to the, the other. In the middle of the campus is still, by their guidelines, too, they're already in system and, and they don't have to direct in.
Yeah.
I'm, this is a really pretty question, but I mean, what if you're late round in one chapter? Literally, I've been waiting, wanting to get out for ten or fifteen minutes from the high school to the middle school. Or vice versa.
Late in terms of.
Like, the child would be late to school.
Or you're gonna get triple detention.
Socially distant.
The parents will get.
It's gonna take a while. I'm sure that kids are not going to be able to.
I'm just saying, you wait there a long.
I'm sure you do, and there would be significant waiting, because a lot of.
Yeah.
We're gonna, don't want parents to come into the building.
One of the questions that I heard, or suggestions, from a couple of different people, was, was there ever a consideration, or would it be possible within the government state office, that the younger kids come to school full-time? And the older kids go remote? When they're more capable. So you put the, some of the younger kids into the intermediate school center or something.
Right.
Something like that.
The problem we have is we don't have staff.
Oh, to split the classes up as well.
We don't have the staff to cover that, to provide the appropriate structure to, that's there. The only option we would have, and that, that option is to two, three, three tables, eight guys. Bone of the staff. We have, we have such a small population, that all the kids that are eight.
Well, you, then we have to be in a, in a twist, right? Because I get one, I just had one ask these specific, just like, I have, I have to get really deep, deeply. And if there's people out the out, who's gonna be up seeing somebody? Who do you, who do you pick? Who gets to come on again?
I think, as you know, we've asked, we're, we're allowing our, and we have to make those special appointments for those students in more restricted environments. But we're getting a quite a fair amount of prospective students, more or least prospective. Which we also want, which we have a significant population of students that are in that. It's called consultant teacher model. And it would be virtually impossible, we have over two hundred students, that some teacher model, have those kids on campus four days a week. And still try to, to have social businesses. So I know that that's, that's a, oh. Some families as well, but we wanna see where the numbers shake out. But clearly, we both have to abide by children's IEDs that was going to have significant synchronous contact with special education teachers, special education aides, which are students assigned Part One aides. We're just gonna have to make that happen. But as though, that will obviously grow organically. Once we know who those kids are, and get those special education teachers back on campus. Some are working in Heather's model, PD, to develop plans as well, so. But we have to abide by those IEDs, so we just know two ways around. Teachers are gonna have to do that, and have to be aggressive around the synchronous, conscious synchronous. That means the one-on-one face-to-face contact, whether that's in person or. Either means Zoom.
I, I've had some like conversations with our lead-in service provider, peer coordinator, because, you know, this falls under that same umbrella as well. And these are highly skilled and trained people who have had drilled into their paths for their entire careers. Confidentiality is key. And right now, we are saying confidentiality is key, but not more important than service. And so when you think about remote and providing teletherapy, which is what our lead-in providers are going to be, have to provide, it's, it's a really challenging situation, so we're working through that. But the state, the federal government and the state government have come out with that. Teletherapy can be provided, and confidentiality is, is important, but not as important as providing service. And so we're giving the family to create a basis for that to happen in a way that allows for the vote, but also that comfort and security of knowing that there's, there's probably an adult in the background. You know, depending on the age of the child, who's going to be on the other side of that. So we are, like Mr. Visery has said repeatedly, I'll say it differently, but just to reiterate it, which is this is our, this is our starting place, not our ending place. And so we're gonna figure out where we are right now, start. And then we're gonna, as we know better, we will do better, and we'll grow, and it's that's the best we can do.
But even in the, you know, there, there, we hope to do as much in-person as we can.
For sure. So we can't avoid those.
Even among the students who are a hundred percent remote. For, it's the guy that related services. We hope that, you know, for those parents that are able and capable of it, you know, we can set up almost like a doctor's appointment, whatever, sessions. So we'll see how that plays out, but I, you know, obviously, we're gonna continue to try to, as much in-person, even within the context of the hybrid models, and with regard to related services.
Will the A, will getting them trained about, like, if they're gonna be taught that they're, they're remote, how, will they get, they can get the training?
Yes, they will. And we talked with, we had a very, Kim Sumford about that. That training will will most likely take place on those first couple of days of school. And then into that first couple of weeks of school. But yes, we have discussed that.
I think you read the blogs, like, you were, I think you were a child, like, you're expecting, right? Read it, you tried to doggy do it, underlined it, or whatever, you read first part of it, and then you had the baby.
And it was different.
And right. Right. It doesn't matter how prepared you are, it doesn't matter. Even when you are a companion, there are things that cannot expect during because every situation, like every child is unique, and we are dealing with thousands of children. And so this is, it's a challenge even on the best, even in the best person. So we're gonna make the best days, the best person days, to be ten in this month. And then we know better.
So we'll, we'll, we'll continue to, continue to move the buses forward. Are there any further questions?
Okay, now I'm going to move on to this is portion of tonight's meeting. I'm going to approve NA one, approval of the twenty, twenty, twenty one passport, if I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Yes? You opposed? So Carrie? I'd like to approve NA two, approval of the total collection of the, the system used agreement for test collection software, if I have a second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Yes? You opposed? So Carrie? I'd like to approve NA three, approval of secret resolution relating to founder of the record system, if you're small. I have a second. All in favor? Yes? Any opposed? So Carrie? I'd like to approve NA four, approval of authorization, excuse me, approval to authorize emergency declaration message relating to develop electrical system at the ministry. I have a second.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor? Yes? You opposed? So Carrie? Great. Would you?
I know, I know Jello, Jello was on, was she still there? We had quarantine, I don't, I don't know if she, she put a question up there or two or three.
I didn't see any question. She was one.
I don't, she did not tell me she.
No, I don't think she.
Oh, okay.
I did not.
Okay.
I will put that she was remote, so. Not absent, thank you for your.
All right, um, at this point, I would like to move to adjourn. Yes. Any opposed? So, your.